Meeting called to order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, October 4th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Kotowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Witherspoon is absent. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
This morning, as always, we ask that we remember those in our community, both locally and globally, that are less fortunate than we are, as well as those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
Approval of minutes from the City Council meeting of September 20th, 2017, and bills for payment on September 29th and October 6th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kotowski.
Are there any citizens here for repository sale? Are there any citizens here for repository sale? One last time. Are there any -- for repository?
Yeah.
What did he say, Rose?
I don't think he's here for repository. Are you here to be a citizen, to be heard? No, you can take your turn, but we're not quite to that point yet.
Yeah, this is for repository sales only.
You have a repository sale? No.
Nice job, Rose. One last time, is there anyone here concerning a repository sale? Hearing none, we'll open this up to citizens to be heard. Rose, do we have anybody requesting?
We had one signed up, Mr. Jim Renwick.
Is Mr. Renwick here?
Apparently not.
Since Mr. Renwick is not here, any citizens to speak before council? You can come up to the mic now.
Good morning, council. How's everybody doing?
Good morning.
I'm Dan Dahlkemper. I'm a landscape architect. I'm here to talk about the alternative lawn ordinance. I know this coming before you today. It's been long overdue in -- I know that Sarah Galloway's been working on it for some time. There's an issue in our country with pollinators, honeybees, butterflies. There's a collapse because of the overwhelming amount of lawn that we have. So I think it's a good idea to look at alternative lawn options. I know this, I own property in the city of Erie at Second and Plum, and I planted wildflowers, and I was sighted because I wasn't mowing them. However, we planted wildflowers at the Erie Art Museum between there and the Children's Museum. They've never been sighted. We've maintained a nice wildflower meadow there also. There are other sections that might be considered landscape plantings, like this rain garden down at Gannon University. These are alternates to lawn, and I think it's a good idea that you guys consider this with this ordinance that's coming before you today. It's the -- sure, thank you. It's a current trend, you know, being more environmental. We've got a lot of areas in the city that could benefit from this. We've also were the designers of the East Side Greenway Plan. And as you head out, the East Side Connector area, there's a lot of additional lawn that doesn't really need to be mowed. It's not that alternative lawns aren't maintained. There are certain maintenance that's required to take care of these areas so that woody plants and invasives and things don't grow into these areas. However, I think it's a great idea at this time to look towards an alternative lawn ordinance. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thanks.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I have a certified pollinator-friendly garden certified by the Washington State University Master Gardener Program. I'm also a certified orientation mobility specialist. And I'm happy to be here to ask you to continue to move forward this alternative lawn ordinance. The State Department of Agriculture is in the process of soliciting public comments on their pollinator prevention plan. And in that plan, they specifically suggest that local jurisdictions promote ordinances that include native plantings that are pollinator-friendly. And as well as all the benefits that Mr. Dahlkemper, a master landscaper, mentioned, we can also talk about the benefits to stormwater management. A more complex overstory allows, and I say this as a soil scientist, allows for better soil infiltration, less runoff. People who plant native plants that are better adapted to the moisture and soil conditions of the area need less mowing, so there's less pollution in the air, they need less water inputs, and they need less chemical inputs, both fertilizer and pesticides. So this is -- and I also thank Sarah Galloway, who prepared this ordinance, for allowing me an opportunity to provide some input, which she incorporated into the finished document. So this is really an excellent opportunity for the city to go with some of the best examples that are happening around the country and to allow people this opportunity to help improve the environment and the biodiversity. I also do want to mention, as a certified orientation mobility specialist, my continued consternation over the way in which construction is managed in this city without providing ample notification and alternate routes for people who are blind and visually impaired, most notably what's going on right here outside the city hall. I know of three independent blind travelers who live downtown because I run into them regularly when I do my Meals on Wheels route. And in addition, I know that there are quite a few people who travel independently downtown who are blind and who could be living here if they come to work here or visit. And especially Gannon and Erie Insurance in their construction projects are doing little to nothing to provide notification and alternative routing for people who are blind and visually impaired. I have been in contact with LeAnn Parmeter and Matt Masala about this, and they've talked about -- and I've provided them with state-of-the-art information that is in compliance with the MUCTD. But to date, nothing has been done to incorporate in the city's efforts in monitoring construction to ensure that visually impaired pedestrians have a safe way to proceed in this town during construction. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I just wanted to -- my name's --
Please give your name.
My name's John Lilly.
Address, please.
147 East 12th. Can I address any issue in the city that has to do with city funding? Well, first I want to talk about the repository about -- so the city holds those properties. And like if there's issues with those properties while the city's holding them, the city's actually supposed to be, you know, addressing that. What I've seen a lot of is they leave it sit how it is and don't take care of it like the city's supposed to. And then when somebody buys one, they throw that all on that person and say like, "That person's supposed to fix it," and "That person's in trouble if they don't," and, you know, like they can't get any more properties, or, you know, like they get sighted or whatever for something that the city was supposed to be taking care of while the city had it. They project it, they try to pass it off on somebody and have them fix it for free and then penalize them if they don't, like it's their fault. You know, and then they give them a hard time about getting any more properties or citing them or anything like that for an issue that the city was supposed to be taking care of the whole time. You know, they make it look like that person's doing it. Another issue with, you know, I was an inmate at the Erie County Prison for a while, and like the conditions in there, I don't know if it gets out to the public a lot, but, you know, a lot of stuff that's going on in there is like ridiculously, like obviously blatantly, you know, harsh punishment, you know, against the rules, you know, like totally corrupt and cruel, and like for people that aren't even doing anything wrong. You know, I wrote a letter here about some things while I was in there, trying to do the right thing the whole time to get out and stay out. And like I'm doing everything the right way, and I'm still getting treated like I'm part of the problem. You know, I'm doing everything I can to do everything the right way. If I have an issue, like, you know, I try to file a grievance or try to talk to an officer or a counselor. And I still get treated like I'm somebody who's just causing a problem and doesn't do anything the right way at all, just does it however they want. I'm getting treated that way despite me not doing any of that, despite me doing it the way they ask me to, or whatever the handbook says, or whatever the officer says. They're still treating me like I'm just doing it however I feel like and, you know, punishing me for it. I have a letter right here that I wrote because I got tired of, you know, trying to handle it within there and nothing changing. I'm trying to write out here and nothing's changing, and I'm like, "I'm doing everything how I'm supposed to," and I'm still getting treated the same way like I'm not. So I wrote a letter just so I could address it here, since, you know, it doesn't seem to be working anywhere else. And I think a lot of other people in there are going through the same thing, and they have been for a long time. So I figured I'd address it here so, you know, more people could like understand what we're saying and going through, and we're not the ones causing the problems. I entered the ECP on 8/21/17 and was moved to GPOD. After a few days on GPOD, I was immediately targeted by COs Hazen and Kinzura of First Shift with accusations of pod disturbances that were never even confirmed, and private conversations with my cellmate that were no risk to security, but was accused of lying when I was explaining this to them. I was placed at observation room for seven days of confinement with one hour of free time for no legitimate security or mental health reason. No misconduct was issued for any of it. Mental health cleared me of it without any explanation or request to change anything on my behalf, which further illegitimizes the status they had me on, when they, you know, they didn't even say I was doing anything wrong. They didn't tell me to change anything I was doing, and they took me off the status without telling me to change anything I was doing. So like why was I even on the status? After being here for about 21 days, I received two eight-hour tickets. That's not a big deal because, you know, it was one ticket on one pod and one eight-hour ticket on another pod. You know, trying to adjust, you know, that's not a big deal. I was then moved to restricted disciplinary pod for no legitimate purpose, for security or mental health, and no explanation, no ticket, nobody told me why, just moved me. No threat to myself or anybody else, no explanation. I've been targeted by CO Owens First Shift, Gold Third Shift, Teresova's Third Shift, Patterson Third Shift, with missing items from my dietary at meal line, accusations of book theft. I would ask politely every time I had an issue with these things.
Thank you very much.
What I could do -- oh, is that the time?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Sir, I just wanted to -- that's under county council purview, not the city, and so you might want to go to county council at the courthouse. You'll have to check with their county clerk, and you can address county council with those issues. Thank you for -- we did listen to you, though. Thank you.
My name's Teresa Lakevich. I live in Green Township now, although I grew up in the city of Erie. I just want to commend the city for embracing all the green attributes that I see around town now with the community garden expansion and the new plantings of the trees and such. And I have to give commendations to Sarah Galloway for enacting or hopefully getting this ordinance, this lawn ordinance enacted, because as a Penn State Master Gardener and a lover of food, fresh food, it's nice to see that some days it's able to go outside and eat right off of your lawn, or what used to be your lawn is now food. If we were cows or goats, it might be nice to have a lot more lawns. I just think that it's a doable solution to some of these food deserts that we have identified in the city. And also, I think that if council would take a closer look, that you don't give up any of your rule over any of these lawns. If it's possible, please consider this a good thing.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? One last time. Any other citizens to be heard? Rose?
We don't have any ordinances this week, so we'll go into new business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
For a second?
A second.
Are there any separations?
Can we separate this lawn ordinance?
Yes, I was going to do it too, but separating number six under new business, correct?
Yep.
Any other separations?
All right, then. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kotowski.
Okay, Mr. Mersky?
I'll let her read it first.
I'll read this first.
Oh, okay.
Sponsored by Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Kotowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie. Request fully respecting the City Planning Commission to review the proposed alternative lawn ordinance and to make a recommendation to City Council for any appropriate amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code ordinance and report recommendations back to City Council for consideration. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to thank Mrs. Galloway from our sustainability office for working on this. I do have some concerns. In my work with the Neighborhood Watch groups, one of the biggest complaints is lawn maintenance and blight. And I, you know, with the Erie Art Museum, Gannon University, and our master gardeners, they do a fabulous job of maintaining these gardens, and they do look beautiful. My concerns are those who will not and do not. And I'd like to see this, you know, I'm going to vote for it because it's a study, but when we're moving forward, I would like to see it a little more tighter. For example, in the ordinance as proposed, it says, "Plants 10 feet from the curb can be grown to any height and may be planted at any density." And I think of complaints that I've gotten from Neighborhood Watch groups about overgrown areas, and the issue becomes not so much the garden itself, but the maintenance of the garden. And when you have somebody who cares, like our master gardeners, or like Gannon University, or like the art museum, it's no problem. But then what happens is, we don't have the resources in our code enforcement office. We only have five code enforcement officers for the whole city. I would hate to put in -- my concern is that sometimes we vote for things, and the unintended consequences are the things that we don't think about, end up being what happened. And so that was one concern, and the other concern I had was, you know, aesthetic judgment shall not be a consideration at play in determining any role of compliance and compliance with the ordinance. And that stands in contrast to the comprehensive plan. And Bukey said we should be making our city more attractive, we should be doing things that enhance the city and make it a city of choice. So the devil's in the details with this, but I just wanted to bring my concerns and put them out there to the community. The issue isn't so much the alternative gardens. We know that there's some very beautiful alternative gardens there. The other thing I had a question about, and I'll let it go, and they can study it, is it says the owner can request a hearing, but it doesn't say in the ordinance who the hearing's in front of. And so that's something that, I don't know if there's a committee that they're going to form, or if it's our code enforcement office that they would have a hearing with or a judge. That's one thing. So I will vote for this because it is a study, and I think that we do need to push the issue forward. My concerns are, we have to make sure that we take a look at those unintended consequences. The people, you know, it's tough to legislate caring for your property. And I just, my concern is when it says you can grow it to as much as you want, as tall as you want, as thick as you want, I can see some absentee landlords taking advantage of that negatively. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I propose this, actually, I have to put the resolution on the agenda for this proposed ordinance to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. I think there's a lot of benefit from providing this clarification. You know, a lot of this, these plantings are going on right now. If we can clarify the rules and help move forward, that makes sense. I mean, on the other hand, I do agree with Councilman Mersky to clarify a lot of the questions that are out there. I did ask Sarah Galloway to put together a Q and A, which we probably just need to look at further, but it kind of had a lot of the questions that are being asked, and it probably needs some further discussion. But I do think it makes sense, you know, after we kind of run through a lot of the questions that are out there, because I think there's many organizations out there that are already installing rain gardens, butterfly gardens, those type of things that definitely help out with the aesthetics of our community. And I think it'd be a benefit if we're able to kind of iron out some of the issues. So again, we'll be voting in favor of this, to have our planning commission review it and get back to us and answer some of the questions. Thank you.
Any other councilmen want to speak? Even though I seconded this, I have reservations about it also. I want to see what the planning commission says. What I don't want this to be is an excuse for, as Councilman Mersky and I see a lot on our side of town, is vacant property without a house, using this as an excuse to call whatever they plant there, you know, vegetation and, you know, natural growth or whatever. It bothers me a little bit because I got to live next door to it, and I certainly don't like the critters that come out of there. You know, I don't need six deer roaming my backyard or woodchucks. That's not what I moved into the city for, so I'd be very curious how they recommend on this. I'm more concerned that I learned today that, you know, rosebushes are in violation of our ordinance, and this is why I want to see something done with this. I want the solicitor to look this ordinance over from a perspective also, because like Mr. Bukey said, one of the things is, I'm not against, you know, we passed urban farming and, you know, it's nice when you walk over to the art museum and see that, but we all know what's going to happen. This could be an excuse for empty fields to become, as Bob and I saw in Europe, nothing more than overgrown grass. And that I will not vote for. I will tell you that right off the bat. If I don't like what the planning commission, you know, comes up with in the final phase, I'll vote against this, but I'm willing to study it. But there are some dangers, and one of them is, as I said, I don't want to see this turning into a carte blanche license for anybody to just let their grass overgrow in an unsightly manner. Any other comments? Rose?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kotowski. This resolution adopts I's six, Nays zero. We do have a waive rules, Mr. President.
Okay, Rose?
This is in regarding to the Villa Maria Two Partnership, LLP Two. Voting on the waive rules, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kotowski. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Kotowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie. Resolution authorizing the proper city officials' standard into an assignment agreement with Villa Maria Two Housing Preservation LP, the successor in interest to Villa Maria Housing Partnership LP Two, for the purpose of assuming three mortgages encumbering the real estate located at 825 West 8th Street, Erie PA. The assignment will extend a loan made by the city in the principal amount of $825,000 by an additional five years from June 2029 to June 2034, for the purpose of permitting the Pennsylvania Housing Administration, PHFA, to extend its 15-year tax credit restriction period. The assignment and/or other lending instruments will reflect that the city maintains a due near lien position on the real estate to other lenders, and that loan principal and deferred interest in the sum total of $9,73,500 is owed to the city. Discussion?
Any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just quickly, we had the opportunity to hear from Chuck Scalise and one of his staff members at HANDS, and this is kind of, this is a repeat of something we've done previously. It is designed to kind of perpetuate a coalescing of organizations coming together, more of a network versus individual groups moving this project forward. The end result of all the wordage and verbiage that Rose read is that some, I guess, historically relevant properties going to be maintained and upgraded, and individuals in our community who live in those apartments and in those structures are going to have an enhanced living experience in a living unit. So I think this is very positive. It doesn't hurt the city. We're not having to come out of our pockets with any more money. This is, again, an enhancement and an opportunity to leverage other funding from outside the city, federal funding, to move this project forward and to, again, develop some of the housing stock and some of the property in our community. So I'm obviously in support of waiving the rules, but also will be voting in favor of the request and the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments? Rose?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Kotowski. This resolution will adopt I's six, Nays zero. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay. We'll start with Mrs. Arrington today.
I have no committee report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I didn't want to make comments during the vote, because I'm voting for, or obviously have voted for, the study of alternative lawn care. I guess one thing I just did want to say is that every single ordinance has to be looked at and evaluated. This is bigger than the issue. But I think we, as things come up, as opportunities come up, as questions come up, as trends in community and trends in society come up, and we're going back to a more green, environmentally friendly, human-friendly experiences. We're talking about bees. When I first came on council, we weren't talking about bees being, coming extinct, and the importance of having habitats available for bees. But I think what the bigger issue is that it causes us to realize that our zoning ordinance and the work that we do in relation to zoning is a fluid, and we have to be willing and able to always look at what is and how, again, how things are changing, how the world is changing, how community is changing. And we cannot be stuck and stagnant with our legislation, with our ordinances. So again, I just want to kind of throw that out there. And I think, too, hopefully, from what they were sharing and what I had read, is that some of the concerns that we have as far as people just kind of saying, "This is grass, and I'm going to let it grow as high as I want," will be regulated because there's going to be some criteria of what is able to reach certain heights. So again, to Mr. Mersky and Mr. Kotowski's points, we just want to make sure that it's done well. And again, the issue for me is not alternative yards and land. It's really about zoning and understanding the importance of what we do from a zoning perspective, not just unintended consequences, but what really and how we really have to move forward and stay up to par with the times and decide as a community what we want stay up to par with the times and decide as a community what we want to participate in, in relation to change of time, and what we don't. And our zoning ordinance is a way to do it. So that's just kind of my Jessica Rancunso zoning ordinance 101 kind of statement. But other than that, I have no additional report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Winarsky, I'm sorry. That topped my game today.
He has hair.
All right. I'm not feeling good this week.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know me very brief. I did attend both the Port Authority meeting and the EMTA meeting this past week. The, like I had mentioned last, meeting, EMTA, their goal is, which they are on schedule to do, is to have the exterior of Phase Two completed so during the winter months, they can continue working and advancing with the project. I am supposed to talk to Mike Tan, meet with Mike Tan, just to give me more specifics of just how much of its local businesses, local labor is involved. I will get that information just so the citizens can know and bring that forward to you. Do look forward to our study session with code enforcement and Andy Zimmerman. That is going to be next week, next Thursday. Although it is a study session, citizens are more than welcome, but naturally, it's not a forum for them to ask the questions or to get involved as much as just listen. But I believe with saying that, if there's something, or if there's a question or something you would like answered, I believe you can reach out to any one of us council people, and maybe we can bring it forward to Mr. Zimmerman, and they can check into whatever that question or issue may be. Did attend the breast cancer awareness lighting of the fountain. And the administration, the mayor, they've been doing it for, what, Jill, 10 years, 11 years? 11 years now. And it's one of the signature things Mayor, Senate, and the administration have done. And you know what? It's a very good event, and it just brings that awareness out. I hope the new administration, whoever it may be, will continue that tradition. It's something that needs to be brought aware of. Maybe one day, we won't have to have it, right? But great event, great job over the years. Thank you. Cathedral Prep, I want to say it was probably 10 years ago or better, before I was on council, when they started building their facility on 12th Street, they came in with agreement with the city that they would give $7,000 a year in lieu of taxes. Well, just so everybody knows, they are, there is a little discrepancy there, not by anybody's fault or anything, but they have concurred that they are going to continue, do it, and continue to do it for the years to come. So I want to thank them for being a partner in the city. Last thing, our Public Works Director, Doug Mitchell, is going to be retiring after 37 years here with the city. It consists of four mayors, which, if you're with the city or under an administration for four mayors, you must be doing something right. He has been an asset to this city. He's been an asset to the councils before me and the ones I've been on. Anytime there was an issue or questions or something we needed to know, he was always there for us. We were going to present him with a little recognition thing from the city this morning and from City Council, but as humbled as he is, we're going to give him it at his retirement party. But Mr. Mitchell, maybe you're watching out there, but thanks for your years of service for the city, and good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did attend several authority meetings, Parking Authority, Water Authority, and also Downtown Partnership Meeting. Nothing really big or new to report, but there's some issues that are coming up that I'll report to council soon on. A couple things coming up, just to add on to Councilman Winarsky's comments about the code enforcement study session. We're going to discuss the sweeps, also, prior discussion on the action plan, and also how everything relates to Erie Focus. So again, if there's any questions, you could email me or phone call any member of council. And also, I'm sure Mr. Kwiatowski will talk about this, but the Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony is coming up soon here. November 11th, parade starts at 9:30. At 26, in French, it starts. And then at 11 o'clock is the, at Jefferson Elementary School is the ceremony at 11 o'clock after. So I'll be attending, and everybody have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mursky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. First off, reading the Erie Times News, we see that Senator Loughlin is fighting for the continuation of ECR, and we applaud him for those efforts. Councilman Kwiatowski and I continue to lobby Senator Loughlin and all of our delegation to make sure that Erie gets its fair share of the gaming revenue. We asked for $500,000, and the House put that in the bill. So hopefully, we can move that forward and get that money for Erie. And I implore Senator Loughlin to include that $500,000 that the House put in into the Senate bill so that Erie gets its fair share of the funding. I also attended the Academy 100 event at Collegiate Academy. It's a phenomenal building. I just happened to be teaching there this year. But until I taught there, I had no idea of the rich history and the pride that a lot of people at our academy graduates had. And it was very well-attended, over almost 500 people in attendance, going back all the way to people from, that are 95 years old that attended the event. So they were born when the building was built, and it went to school there. And so it's a magnificent structure. They don't build them like that anymore. And more importantly, the people that came through there became leaders in the community and continue to do so today. So we recognize Academy for their 100th anniversary. And just to reiterate what Councilman Winarsky said, as Chair of the Finance Committee, we did look for revenues that were outstanding. And one of the things that we noticed was Cathedral Prep made a commitment and wasn't honoring it. And so we were, I made a couple of phone calls and worked with the administration on that, and we were able to rectify the situation here. It was just an oversight. And we're excited that those revenues are coming in, and we thank all of our nonprofits that continue to contribute in lieu of taxes, either a donation or a pilot. And so we continue to work for those alternative revenue streams so that we don't have to burden the taxpayers any more than we have to, to maintain city services. And finally, again, not to beat a dead horse, but congratulations to Doug Mitchell on his retirement from Erie City Government. He did a phenomenal job. Anytime that we had concerns in Public Works, Doug was there with an explanation. And he was very customer-friendly and citizen-friendly, and we wish him the very best in his retirement. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mursky. I'll keep my report brief. You would have found it interesting, Bob, when they actually closed Academy, the number of people, including members of the print media, who thought the building should be, you know, was in bad shape. Not really true. And I had the pleasure of touring parts of that building that people hadn't seen in decades. You know, there's a secret tunnel that used to exist going out to the football field, and there were things underneath there that were, the things we found in there that had been buried for years. But it is a marvelous building with a lot of good secrets and a lot of memories.
No bodies.
Pardon?
Hopefully, no bodies.
No, no, no. But Curtis will laugh at this. We found these old football coats that were probably, you know, heavy woolen ones you used to wear on the sidelines. And we put a couple of them in the archive, but they had been tossed away in closets and...
Did you find one that said Kwiatowski?
No, no. I went to tech. I went to tech, unfortunately.
Unfortunately?
No, unfortunately for Academy, because we used to beat them all the time. But getting back to the meeting, I want to thank Curtis Jones for giving us the ideas over the years about how we make deals on revenue, and we give things away. And as Councilman Winarsky said, as we were looking through the pilot agreements, it's amazing how this one slipped through. But I can assure the public that this council is constantly looking for holds in the revenue stream. It was through this council's leadership that we closed the garbage bills. And there's a couple other areas that we're going to be looking at very closely in the coming months. And this is an example that, it may be only 7,000, but 7,000 can do a lot of wonders over the years. And we are not in a position to be leaving pennies on the sidewalk. We just can't anymore. And finally, my only complaint driving to work this morning, we need better coordination on our building projects, especially with Erie Insurance. They're constantly closing down 7th Street, and one never knows whether it's open or closed. So I would suggest, and I have suggested, that they put a sign at Parade Street so a lot of people do not make the journey down 7th Street, only to be told they have to. If they close it too far ahead, you have a one-way street that sends you in the wrong direction of where you're intending to go. And so if they can put a sign up there, like they do in other cities, warning that the road ahead may be closed, especially with 7th Street, I mean, I start coming down 6th Street, they close that. Then I go over to 7th Street, they close that. There's no coordination. Same thing with 38th Street, and I jumped over Bill Pettit about that. You know, you come down your street in the morning, and all of a sudden, you got cars parked up against the, right up against the intersection, and you can't see around them. We need to make it a little more seamless, you know, adjusting for the problems of construction. But it doesn't hurt to put a little more signage. And that's my only complaint.
I don't have any reports.
Nothing from the controller? The administration?
Just want to say congratulations to Doug Mitchell for 37 years of dedication to the City of Erie. Throughout this administration with Mayor, Senate, it's been a pleasure working with Doug. As Mr. Winarsky mentioned, we had the Pink Fountain on Thursday evening. Without his guys and his team working in Public Works, that we would have never been able to pull that off throughout all of these years. So it's just one of the very small things that I'm very grateful to. Everybody knows that the Pink Fountain is very near and dear to me, so I certainly, it's the most recent event, thank him especially for that. We have the Pennsylvania Municipal League coming into town this weekend. Hopefully, about 200 delegates from across the Commonwealth that will be partaking in our fine city. Lots of things are planned, and we're looking forward to showcasing all the assets of the City of Erie. And we hope that council will be able to, of course, you're all registered, and we'll be attending, but I'm looking forward to sharing that with all of you folks. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yes. Quickly, just in relation to, as we move forward about signage and notifying citizens about construction, et cetera, to, one citizen's concerned, those that are visually impaired and have other disabilities, if there's ways of doing some better marketing. I mean, I know that we can't control what people do, but if we're looking at this issue, that's not just the visual signage, because that doesn't apply to everyone.
Right.
And so there's some other ways. And maybe if we're having that conversation, we have to have the inclusive conversation of disability and those experiencing disability to, you know, be brought into the conversation as well. So just a side note.
Jill, does the mayor still have the ADA Advisory Committee?
Disability, I don't think he does.
We do?
Yes.
Because someone asked me that the other day, and I said, I really didn't know whether, but he was interested in...
Yes, I believe they meet quarterly, and Ma Sela, I'm from Economic Development, attends that along with Mayor, Senate.
I'll have him call you, though, if he has a question.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Like Councilman Jones said, you know, maybe we can, you know, I know construction is important, but in dealing with, like, long-term ones like 38th Street was, especially with disabled people or people that are just trying to do business and keep, there's a lack of coordination, especially when you got private contractors. Our people did a great job. I was watching them. But some of the private contractors, not so good, you know. But, Mr. Chief Justice, anything?